Debbie, as long as you're up. We'll call a meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation good or bad, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let the record reflect that. Board members, Spang is at a meeting in Virginia tonight, so that's why she's not here.
She is on board business.
She's on board business, yes it is. It's meeting with one of the other boards over in MIB in Virginia. Principals report. You don't have a student rep unless Bill wants to fill in for the student rep.
What a good job.
Well, we've had a great start to Snow Week. Cold week. Yeah, hopefully they'll warm up and get to school tomorrow. Tomorrow we have, of course Jeff Isaacson is a member of our staff and he's on the curling team. We're having a send-off for him at 9:40 tomorrow. Kids have planned some things and we have kid curling in the gym. We're gonna try to find a small kid to put on a scooter and see if we can hit the bullseye at the end of the gym and stuff like that. Although we were told by Jeff's coach that he's not allowed to participate, he can just watch, because he can't get injured. But anyway, that should be fun. We got some news media coming, so he should be on Channel 10 tomorrow night. We had a retreat last week with Youth Frontiers that was with 4th and 5th grade. I thought it went very well. The team did very nice. Kids were receptive to it and responsive. Tomorrow we have our last after-school workshop of the year. Various sites are doing different things, but I know we are, we're concentrating on, we're looking at testing for coming up in March. We're gonna evaluate where the kids are right now and what we need to cram in before March and try to group kids to make sure that stuff happens. And by next Monday, I Love to Read Month is gonna kick off. We're having the Olympic theme, of course, and lots of good activities planned, so we'll keep you updated on that.
Okay, thank you. Since we don't have any other principals, you had the whole floor tonight.
Yeah.
Okay. Visitor input, anyone who's not on the agenda who wishes to address the board? If you want to address the board, just stand up at the podium and state their name and what they want to do. You think?
Okay. I'm Roger Karchiver. I live at 703 Auburn in Evlith, and I have a few points to make here. Hopefully, I'm trying to make them brief. Last week, I was at the meeting where there was a very historic decision made by the board to close down Evlith and Gilbert 7 through 12. It kind of affected me quite a bit, being from Evlith.
Roger, can I interrupt you for a minute? It wasn't a vote to close it down. It was just a vote to go into discussion with that Mountain Iron Bureau in Virginia.
Okay, I realize that. Where I was looking at the probability of closing down, knowing that that vote was taken. So I'm, from my own estimation, I'm saying, is it gonna be 50-50, 90-10, or 100-0? I'm looking at the political situation and the money available at the IRB and the people involved. It looks like they're, the people that can control the funding. I think we have precedent. These schools were built by mining company tax money. I think the IRB money is, goes with that. So I think, like we mentioned at the meeting, the stars are aligned. If we wait, you know, the money won't be available. What if there's a downturn in the economy in the future years? So I see this thing going. I think it's a, you know, the plan, it looks like a good plan that they have. So I'm saying it's gonna be 90-10. I'm leaving 10% for some unforeseen collapse in the economy or something. So I'm ready to move on here. And so the other thing I looked at, I says, well, is 75 million enough to build this school? Well, I went on and I checked with a report that SPNM 213, 2013 Annual School Construction Report. I wanted to see if we have enough money. Well, what I saw was for 257 square feet per student, 1,269 students, 1,300 students, 216 square feet per student. We're talking about in the higher quartile of all the schools, this is the median now, half and half above and half below. It's the higher quartile, so it's a quality school, we're talking $60 million. So we're talking 75 million. So we're in the ballpark with a high-quality school there. It kind of eased my mind when I went through this. So that's another reason I think it's 90-10. It brings me back now to where we go from here. My concern, I'm at 703 Auburn, I'm just up the street. I'm concerned about the property here, what's gonna happen. I know you still have, you're still gonna have the Franklin Grade School going there, but the rest of the plant, I'm concerned. I've looked at a report from the Pew Charitable Trust, what happens to shuttered schools around the nation. There's a lot of schools that shut down, and there's some 10% residential, 22% government and nonprofits, other educational charter schools, 42%. Local examples, I'm thinking of, well, in town, we have the Lincoln School. It's 100 years we're gonna celebrate of the construction of the Lincoln School. I see that's a viable school now, it's being used every day. I'm looking at Virginia by the hospital where they have the residence, the apartment buildings. I'm looking at Cock, they got a little facility there with a coffee shop I stopped in, and they sell secondhand stuff. So the other one I look at is by Wabik. I don't want to see that here. I mean, we're getting a property right next to the school. We don't want blight, and I'm sure you guys don't either. So anyways, I think that's, it's gonna take this, you know, do we have money for the transition to, when we close these schools down? This thing is happening fast. We gotta have our ducks in line before April in order that they can design the capacity of the school. So we have decisions, do we need money for the close-down of the schools? So it brings me down to citizen participation. What I'm requesting is, I have some question, a list of questions. They're not something that I would bring up here, they're just data. So I am requesting a contact to, and I don't want to be a nuisance, you know, I just want a brief question, and I'll have my answers, but I would like a contact. The other thing is, could we, I would like to see status meetings as we're going along to report the status to the, more of an informal type of get-together. Similar to what they, what MINDOT did on Highway 53 on the closing, they had these status meetings. This is just for the Evlith-Gilbert district, not, you know, just for issues on that. If that's too much, if there's not enough interest, I would like a procedure where, you know, every time I have a question, I hesitate to come here and take up time. I would like to submit in writing, and then it would, it would be distributed to the board members, and then they could look at it prior to the meeting and, rather than taking a lot of time, then the board members can discuss it. So those are my comments for today. Thank you for the opportunity to address the board.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? No, it's under visitor input, Paulie, if you.
The segments that are not on the agenda?
Yeah.
I wish, I might wish to speak on the agenda, I think.
We'll see. Okay. Okay, moving on. Agenda changes?
I have no agenda changes.
Okay. Approval of the agenda?
Can I move to approve the agenda?
I'll second. Okay. We have a motion to approve the agenda. Any discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have 7.0, request to remove any topics from the consent agenda.
Mr. Chair, I would like to remove item B.
Okay.
At this moment, at this time.
Anyone else? Okay. Hearing none. Move on to 8.0, the consent agenda.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now, Leon?
On item B?
Item B.
The treasurer's report, due to a change of two items that were removed from disbursements, there will be a change on that total. So instead of 278,011 and 43 cents, it is now 235,491.27.
Okay.
I make a motion to accept the treasurer's report.
We have a motion, you need a second?
I'll second.
We have a second. Any discussion? What is the items that were?
The two items that were removed were Brown Transportation and Gary Scurriance. They will be taken care of at a later date.
Because of the closing of the schools these two days.
Yes, okay, yeah, the.
We have to adjust.
Okay.
They're paying him.
Okay. Any other discussion on that item? Hearing none, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, moving on. 9.0, new business. 9.1, Mr. Feig.
We have Bill Feig here from Northland Securities to talk about refinancing of, or the refunding of some bonds.
Your Lord's worship, honorable members of the board. This is the second time we've visited this issue. First issued in 1997, and then refinanced in 2004, and now we're gonna refinance it a second time. This time we're gonna need to save the taxpayer $74,622. 80% of that goes to the benefit of the Technite Fund, which funded the debt service by 80%. And 20% comes to the taxpayers in the form of reduced property tax. You have attached to my letter a copy of number one, the calculation page, looks something like this. This compares old debt, new debt, and then the balance, which totals to 74,000. On the, let's check, the third page, there is the total tax levy, but then I always break this out, and we file it with the Department of Revenue over, you know, down the street, because they need to know how much our tax levy is of the total, and how much goes, has to come from the Department of Revenue. So this is the way that we do a little bit of help for them and give them this, these numbers. And the numbers that go for this current year were as of July 1. So this will give them the numbers, so maybe they can go back and recoup some of that and put it back where it belongs. So that's what that page there is for. You have, by the way, the old bonds, this is really kind of neat, the old bonds had an interest rate of 3.44%. And the 3.44% was simply for the remaining four principal payments that were refinancing. Now, it's really kind of interesting. And now these are gonna sell for less than 1%, .97, 1%. So 2.5% reduction. And that, the last time we did refinancing, we had more money, but it was just about the same one, about 2.6%. In total, we've saved $180,000 off the debt service the taxpayers would have to pay on both issues. Not a bad transaction. This follows the Mike and Deb's policy and the board's policy of refinancing whenever possible, any piece of debt we've got, and we've done that. We really only have one more piece that I believe we can get at. That's our OPEB bond. I want to get those really bad. We have to have a little bit of a change in the market, but we have a resolution in front of you, and all it simply takes is that, a motion and a second by me, for the board to adopt the resolution. Oh, wait a minute, I have one more thing. We were acting in this case as a placement agent, a little bit different than in the past, and the Evlith Bank wanted one maturity, Gilbert wanted one maturity, and so our sales force had to find other banks to buy another one. We had a couple of energetic salesmen, and one found Alma Bank of Wisconsin, which made no sense to me, but then, you know, I'm not that kind of a salesman. And then I do some work out in North Dakota, and one of the guys I worked with a lot, he found a bank way up in northwestern North Dakota oil country, and he's got way too much money. And so he bought one maturity. So we don't care who bought them, as long as it's a market rate, and our trading desk set the rates, so that nobody was gonna fiddle around with the rates, and it came right in.
Okay. Good.
So we have four different banks. And that's why everybody's been signing papers, and there's four times as much paper to sign, because there's four individual banks.
I know, my hand is a little.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else?
No, not unless they have any questions.
Questions?
What was the original bond for in 97?
Oh dear, 1997, we were back in, right behind this building, and I think we were doing some rehab, and it was about $3 million.
That's for, that'd be for the science wing edition?
No, I think it was made up by the gym and the music department.
Oh, that's the original back over there, the edition where the band area?
Yeah. Remember, we did that in two pieces?
That was on, that was on the Evlith board at that time.
Yes, that was for the gym and the band hall up there.
Okay. Anything else?
Isn't it amazing how I can remember some of that?
Yeah.
I can kind of remember, you know, right here. But we were back visiting that part of the building several times, and one of them took a lot more money than the rest of them.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, we need a motion for the resolution.
I'll move.
Okay, you need a second?
I'll support.
Okay. Resolution is by roll call, so.
Our clerk is gone, so.
I've got it all set up already, so. Mona?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Leon?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes also, so it's 6-0. Mary is not here, so.
He's two seconds. I second, okay.
Leon did. So, resolution passes. So, thank you. 9.2, approval of guidelines for visitor input.
Okay, in your packet, I had the exhibit that we've been working on the past couple of board meetings, the guide for public participation at school board meetings. Mary contacted me today because she had seen MIB's information for visitors, how they handle visitor input at their meetings, and she thought that it was a more concise document. So she forwarded it to me and said that she would like the board to review this document because she thinks it's less cumbersome and says the same thing. So I have a copy of that at your table, it's 9.23. I don't know if you want to take time to review that this evening, or if you want to take it home, review it, and come back and discuss it at the next board meeting. I know we've been putting this off a bit, but, you know, I looked at this document too, and I thought, it's nice, it's a one-page document. It says basically the same thing, using different terms in that, maybe easier. And what Mary mentioned is that this document is always attached to the agenda of the Mountain Iron Bureau School District, so everyone has access to it. So I don't know what the board's pleasure is at this time, if you want to review it and come back, or if you want to take a look. I did make the changes on the other document that you talked about at the last board meeting, so I don't know if you want to take a look at that, or what direction you want to go.
What do you want to do?
On those changes that you made?
Did I make a mistake?
Maybe. In the Part II General Statement of Policy, item A, I think you've lined out expression and comments.
Oh, the comments is not supposed to be lined out. It, yeah, the expression is supposed to have a line drawn through it, but comments italicized is the replacement term. So that is supposed to be there.
Okay, what's the board's pleasure? What do you, do you want to look at the one that Debbie has at the table? You want to look at the one that Mary forwarded from MIB, which is a lot shorter and more directly to the point? It's up to the board and what they want to do.
Well, really looking at one that Mary gave us, I think we should wait till next week, our next meeting, so we can at least look, compare them.
Yeah, well, it's only one paragraph.
Yeah.
Well, I think we could incorporate some of these other paragraphs into.
Okay, well, if you want to wait, that's fine.
I would think that we could go ahead and adopt the policy that we've been talking about for a couple of meetings. I like this paragraph that Mary marked. I think that could be at the very beginning of this policy that we're talking about, 9.21. And I like the idea of this page being available at the beginning of every meeting with the title of information for visitors. And it doesn't necessarily have to be our policy, I see they have information at the bottom about when they meet and so on and times, but I think it would be a good idea to adapt something like this for our meetings. But I think it would also be a good idea to have this policy as our base policy for how we're gonna conduct our meetings.
I like that.
I have a problem with the comments and participation law. Are we taking out the participation of the, of the community here? And they're just gonna be able to give a comment? To me, a comment is very limited. And at least with participation, you can express your feelings on why you think this, I go down to item under procedures number three, where the chair has the, recognize one speaker at a time, and I look at number four, where you have a five-minute limitation. And I just firmly believe that if we just limit our community to a comment, comment is very limited. I believe they still should have participation, and if you give them five minutes, I can see nothing wrong with that. At least you get the feelings of what they feel, and you can debate it.
Yeah, Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think those issues are addressed, Tom, in that paragraph that Mary has highlighted on the information for visitors. Although every citizen is entitled by law to attend school board meetings, only members of the board are entitled by law to take part in deliberation. The meeting is the only means by which a school board carries out its duties and conducts its official business. The public attends, listens, and observes. There will be a time set aside during each meeting for the public to address the board. The board conducts the business, the board deliberates, the visitors can make comments. That's what that paragraph says.
Mark, which paragraph, are you looking at 9.23?
I'm looking at the handout that Mary gave us.
The second paragraph.
Yeah, this is from Independent School District, number 712. I think we should have time.
This is what Mountain Iron Bureau does, and I know there's a lot of school districts across the state that follow that policy.
Well, I think, I would like to have time to digest this. I mean, I just got it here tonight. I'm looking at it here. I would still like to have time to digest this before I can make a decision. My personal opinion.
Yeah. Anyone else? Beth? Mona?
My only concern is, we have a policy in place right now, so it's not like we're operating without one.
Yeah.
And we have so many important topics that we're juggling right now. We're in the process of attempting to hire a superintendent. We have the collaboration that we're in the early stages of. We've recently obtained the facility study that, my understanding is, as we go forward, various elements of that will require discussion and, you know, further research. And I would hate for this to be the point in time where we restrict what we hear from the public. We're here because of the public. We are not volunteers who showed up one day and said we'd serve. The public put us here. We're elected officials, and it's our responsibility to represent their thoughts and needs as much as, as the students. Certainly, the students are always first, but it's the voting public that we really need to hear from. And I don't want to, I don't want meetings to become disorderly, but our chair has always kept the meetings orderly.
Most of the time, yeah.
Well, I think we really haven't had a problem. And I don't want this to be the time that we restrict listening to what the public wants to bring to us. I agree that they shouldn't participate in the discussion as it, as it pertains to our vote. But I don't think that we should ever say that there's a topic on the table that they're not welcome to, to give us their two cents worth on.
Well, I don't think that this does it if you look.
No, I'm just saying, my opinion is, I don't want it to become that. And I don't want that to be the interpretation of any of this.
Okay. Okay. Beth? Anything? Leon?
I'm willing to go along to accept one we have right now and then integrate the other one into it.
Yeah, I don't see anything wrong with, with the one that we're looking at, this 9.21, with the changes, because the changes really aren't anything different than what we're doing, it's just a different wording. Participation has been crossed out with comments. We're still allowing people to make comments. It's just that we don't want to get into deliberations, discussions, and debates sometimes on what's, what's being brought forward. I think, I don't think with this board has ever turned anybody down to at least give some kind of comments. I hope. So, well, that's where I'm coming from anyhow. And I think that we should maybe look at this and think about what we've got on the table tonight, but we can go ahead. Well, it's up to the board what they want to do.
Well, one thing too, Keith, is that all the years that I have come to board meetings, even before I was on the board, the board chair has always given the public a chance to voice their opinion. So I don't foresee a problem there.
I don't either. At least not for me, I hope. What's the board's pleasure? What do you want to do? What do you want to do?
I think that we could probably approve the 9.21, and then have something very similar to this, like we said, attached to all the agendas. So when visitors come in, people come in. Here it is. This is essentially what our policy states.
Okay.
Is that a motion?
Okay.
Then I'll, I will second the motion.
So that's a motion to adopt the, excuse me, the Guidelines for Public Input stated in 9.21 and 9.22. Is that correct? As, as written on the table now?
That's right.
And to maybe incorporate some of 9.23 at a future date, actually, actually have a chance to review it. I'm, I'm just, don't put that in a motion, I'm just trying to clarify it.
I think the motion was that this document, 9.23, that we prepare something like that and have that available at all of our meetings.
Just a concise thing for everybody.
Yes, okay, so it's an additional add-on at the board, to board meetings. For the public to.
With the agenda, yep.
Okay. Okay. We need a second.
I do, I do.
Any other discussion? Hearing no other discussion, all who's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. Five-one, we have one dissension. Sorry about that, Tom.
It's all right.
9.3, Discussion on Board Meeting Times. This is one that I brought up because at our reorganization meeting, I think, Tom, you brought up about.
Drive safe call.
About meeting at six o'clock, so we give more of the public a chance to get here. Even when we've had meetings at six o'clock, we have the same group of people who come all the time unless there's a big issue. I leave home at 5:30 in the morning, and by the time I get here at 4:30, I'd like to get things done so I can go home. Six o'clock, I got to come here, go home, come back here, then go back home. I don't get home until eight, nine o'clock at night. I just think we should go back to the five o'clock or compromise of some, I think six o'clock is too late. I, I've done it for years, and it gets to be an awful long day. That's, that's my opinion. I wanted to see if anybody else had the same opinion.
I think that we have a requirement in 12 grades that students need to come to a board meeting. And I think if they're involved with sports or pep band, five o'clock is when most practices are getting done. So this gives them a time to just leave practice, come right here. If there's pep band, they can come to the meeting, and they're not going to be late to the pep band if they're playing at a game or whatever. So I think that for those students, for partially for that reason, I, I think the convenience of the students who have to fulfill that requirement, having it at five works for them as well.
I didn't mean it just for my, for my personal.
No, 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 I know.
No, no, I'm just, I just want to clarify, it wasn't just for me, it was, because we've, we've had students who come in here too, and some of them come for the first hour of the meeting, and then they have to take off. I think like the last meeting, we had some hockey players who were here for a while, and they had to take off. So it's nice that they have a chance to come to the board meetings and complete their requirement for the government classes, and then they can go. Well, I'll let somebody else speak.
I don't see any problem with going back to five o'clock. It really doesn't matter that much to me, but I think five o'clock has some advantages for administration, shortens our date by an hour. I'd be comfortable with going back to five o'clock.
Mary also asked me to share with you that she would prefer going back to five o'clock. She shared that with me today and just said, share it at the board table, so.
Okay. Yeah?
We can always schedule a meeting at six o'clock, if we have to.
If needed.
If, if there seems to be a lot of interest, depending on the topic.
If there seems to be a lot of interest in something, we can always change the times, but.
Special meetings, we can have later.
About the only reason that I was okay with changing it to six, because I know we were at five, and we changed it back to six, was primarily because of Mary and Keith, because they are working. And Beth is too.
I am.
So is Monica. But I don't have a problem either way.
I think it's very nice for me, when I, totally speaking personally, it's nice to come home right after school, get dinner for the kids, get them where they need to be, or if I'm lucky enough to have my parents around, I can get them, to them, and not feel like I'm running in the door, like, oh. So at five o'clock, it just, it seems to work. We're just. It flows.
See, in your case too, being a teacher in Virginia, if there's anything going on after school that you need to be at, I was thinking of that too. You know, because it can run into 4:30, five o'clock, and then now you're rushing to get here. You know?
Usually, I'm not at full, I'm at school much past four o'clock, usually.
Yeah. All things can happen with teachers.
Do we need a motion to move it back?
Well, I, I believe we do, to move it back. Tom, you want to?
Well, I don't know. For years, it's been at six o'clock, and I thought it would be more convenient for people that are working to make it at six. I mean, to me, I have, I have no problem either way. I mean, I'm, I'm retired, so I can make it. But this probably puts a hardship on some of the board members too. I mean, I don't know, it, to me, six o'clock is a better time for the community, the people that work at five o'clock, they can't make it here at a meeting. Are we limiting to what we are doing? I mean, hey, we accepted this position on this board, didn't we? And shouldn't we afford the opportunity to, to the community too? I mean, aren't they under consideration here? I mean.
Tom? Of all the years, unless it's something major going on, they will make it, whether it be at five o'clock, six o'clock, or seven o'clock. But if it's not, nothing major, we normally don't have a big audience here, whether it be five o'clock or six o'clock.
We can't even get the news media to censor our news.
Right.
Well, whatever the board decides, it's their option. It's my opinion, certainly my opinion. I mean, I'm looking at the overall picture.
But generally, we're lucky if we get four people even at six o'clock.
But we don't know in the future with all this other information we've got going on now, this can all change.
But they'll make, they'll make arrangements for that.
So do we have to make the change right now, or can we give this a little bit of time to see how the six o'clock works? This is the only meeting we've had at six o'clock though, it's the first one.
Not really.
No, we had 19 years of it.
Well, I'm saying right, at the present time right now, this is our first meeting.
But we only had maybe, what, three meetings at five o'clock?
Well, the public.
Like a year and a half.
We had a year and a half of it, maybe.
Five years at five, something.
What I'm saying, the community is used of us meeting at five o'clock.
Yeah, maybe six months.
We're coming in at six, so we're going to have one meeting here and all at six o'clock, so we can't really judge us, can we? Until we get, can't we give this a little time to work, to see how it works?
We need, we need a motion anyway before we go too much farther, if we're going to do it.
I'll make a motion to go back to five o'clock.
I'll support that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Okay, more discussion.
We have been on six o'clock, and it didn't, doesn't make a difference.
And with what's going on, we're still going to have, we're going to have meetings with the public about what we're doing with the joint collaboration. We're going to have meetings set up like Virginia and MIB have done. It's not going to be a closed book. We're going to be transparent also. There's going to be many meetings coming up that are not going to be, probably maybe board meetings, informational meetings. So I, it's, well, what's your pleasure? Motion is already out there in a second. Any other discussion? All who's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries five-one. Thank you. 9.4, Superintendent Search Update.
The only information I really have to share is that the consultant was in district last week and met with community members, board members, and various staff members to develop a community profile, as well as a profile for the new superintendent. And right now, they're in the process of gathering applications. The deadline for applications is February 15th. So all I heard is that they had one applicant at this point in time, so.
Okay, moving on then, if we have nothing else. 9.5, Update on Collaborative Discussions with MIB and Virginia. Who wants to jump in?
Well, as of last night, Virginia and MIB, their boards both passed resolutions that included Evlith Gilbert in the co-location discussions. One thing we had talked about, if we were to be accepted in the discussions, is that we would also use the consultants that they are using in terms of publicity and research and that. So I would ask the board to, at this time, at least authorize me to contact the lobbyists that they've hired, Gary Sirkvenek, Duke Scorch with Zenith Research, and Bruce Miles, and have discussions with them about setting up public forums, such as Virginia and MIB are having this week, and also getting information about the district, making that available to Duke Scorch, so that can be included in those question-and-answer documents that are being modified all the time, as well as have a conversation with him about the surveys that are going to be sent to community members. But I need authorization from you in order to make those initial contacts.
Yeah. Need a motion?
I'll make a motion for the superintendent to contact those, those people involved.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all who's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, and then another thing, at the table, I did put, Virginia and MIB have developed a draft of a joint powers agreement. This will have to be modified to include us also, but at the meeting last night, at their joint committee meeting, they asked if board members and superintendents would review this document and identify any questions they had with regards to the document, and then if you would provide those questions to me. They would like to have those questions to be presented to John Colasmo by next Monday, so that we can get some clarification on this document. Now, I believe that this document will be in draft form for a long time, but I think they want to have questions clarified as we proceed. So that's one document I provided you. And then, there's been a lot of talk about a previous study that was done back in 2009, 2010, with SEH, where Virginia and MIB were given some grant money to hire these consultants to go out and take a look at different locations that might be good locations for a new school. And this is the result of that study, as well as, I did find in my files, some opinion research that was done during that time, just to show you, I wanted you to be aware of what was the public's opinion at that time with regards to some type of a collaboration. I just was emailed too, late in the day, as part of the study, there was, part of it was looking at the curriculum at that time too, and what would happen if curriculums could be mashed. I'll make copies of that and get that out to you sometime in the future also. But I thought these would be good documents for you to review, so you have some history as to what took place back in 2009, 2010.
Now, was there anything else that we had to make a, a motion to pass, anything as far as?
Well, at the.
I think this, the motion that we made should cover.
Well, there's going to be some expense associated with using these consultants, but at that joint committee meeting last night, and if I'm wrong, Mark was there, and Leon, you were there, they talked about, they're estimating the cost of these consultants to be, well, they put $100,000 out there, but they thought that was kind of on the high end. They wanted to get together and talk about how those expenses would be shared, and there was some talk about, based on per pupil, that was one of the options out there. Another one was dividing it in half, and then everybody sharing like a third of that half, I would guess is what it would be, and then the other half of the expenses being divided per pupil. But it sounded to me like there was going to be further discussion taking place with regards to that, and then a recommendation coming forward for the boards to actually approve. So actually, in authorizing me to contact these people, you're authorizing some expenditure of our dollars. I can't give you an exact figure as to what that's going to be right now, but I would certainly ask, you know, Bruce Miles, what his expense would be for our district to come in and conduct a public forum. And I would find out from Duke Scorch out of Zenith Research, you know, if we were to have a similar survey. I mean, the talk that, the conversation that I heard is they were looking at surveying 300 individuals from each community. Now, I'm not sure that that's what we'll agree on, but I could at least find out what would be the anticipated cost of a survey that would survey 300 individuals. So I'll have a little bit better idea of what those costs might be, but.
Do we have the funds available to do this? Once you do get a figure?
We have, I mean, you're aware through our audit that our fund balance has gone up somewhat, so we do have some additional funds in our fund balance that would cover this. It's going to come out of the general fund.
Even the other two school districts last night, they couldn't pinpoint finances, how much it's going to be. They're just guessing right now.
Anyone else?
I was at that committee meeting last night, and then Mountain Iron Buell had their board meeting at 5:30 following that committee meeting, and Virginia met at six. And I went over and sat in the audience for the Mountain Iron Buell meeting. And many comments from people in the audience, some of the same individuals that were at the committee meeting, offering comments. I thought it very interesting when they got to the item on the agenda, whether to include us in the, in the process. There was a motion made and seconded to include us. The board chair asked for discussion, and there wasn't any. He asked again for discussion, and there weren't any, any comments. They taped their meeting, and I think it would be available somewhere. But my recollection was the chairman, and I have to apologize, I do not know his, his name.
I think it's Troy Martin.
Troy.
Troy is the chairman, yes.
Made comments about why he thought it was a good idea. And the basic gist of his comments were, he thought it was going to be a much better process having three school districts involved than just the two, than just MIB and Virginia. Having the third brought more balance into the planning, into the collaboration. And evidently, the other board members felt the same way because it was a unanimous vote. One of the things that I realized listening to the committee meeting, sitting in on MIB and some of the other meetings, is our board needs to be brought up to speed with what's been happening, what the discussions have been. And I would like our superintendent to contact the other two superintendents, maybe arrange for a common joint meeting. for a common joint meeting between the three boards so that we would all hear and be able to participate in any discussion or whatever as to where the process is at this point.
I think it'd be a good idea too. It would bring us up to speed to where they are at this point, having all three boards together. So if we have any questions, now's the time to answer and you've got them all together. No speculation, no second guessing, no hearsay. Got a question, ask them.
And I'm also of the opinion that as we go forward with this planning, that meetings of the three boards simultaneously would be a good way to proceed. Because if the committee meets and discusses issues and then it goes back to the individual boards to take action or have another meeting, it just seems it's going to really slow the process down. And I think the more often that the three boards are sitting in the same room talking about issues, the better off we're going to be. Because we don't have a year and a half to work on this.
No, we don't.
We've got two and a half months to come up with something. But that would be something to bring up better if we have a joint, a simultaneous meeting of the three boards.
Is there going to be another, like they did a joint meeting last week, are they, I thought that the intention was to have more like that?
I think they are going to. I haven't had an opportunity to talk to them if they've scheduled another committee meeting or not. I would have assumed they would have notified me today if they had something scheduled already.
I think there's a lot of questions that we have to ask, no question about it. I mean, this is a big move and I believe it's something that's more that we have to put a lot of thought into this before we go with it. You know, I personally have a lot of questions myself. Well, what is our curriculum going to be? Could it be more than what we have now or how are we going to integrate the sports? I mean, I'm going to be sitting alongside of one of my colleagues in school and I'm going to be tackling them on a football field. I have a lot, you know, I have a lot of thought in it. We've got to put a lot of thought into this before we go and.
I think that's one of their proposals, Tom, is to keep the teams separate.
Oh.
So it could very well happen that the one guy you tackled last night is the guy sitting next to you in the classroom.
Oh, that's right. I could be sitting alongside you in a bath class the next time I'm tackling you on a football field, you know? But I mean, it's just, just one thing. I think we have a lot of questions here, a lot of questions here that has to be addressed. And so we have a good, clear input on what we are doing here as a board.
I agree.
Because we are, this is a big commitment and we have to put a lot of thought into it, my personal opinion.
That's a darn good opinion. Well, I think we all have the same questions that are hanging out there that, you know, do you dare want to say it? Well, you know what? You have to say it because if you don't, then you've got nobody to blame but yourself. Got a question, ask them.
From what I understood at last night's meeting is that curriculum itself will be all integrated, where you will have Mountain Iron Buell, Virginia, Evlith Gilbert students sitting beside each other in the classroom. But once three o'clock comes around and you leave, your sports will be totally different.
Leon, what meeting was this, that you attended last night?
There was a, MIB and Virginia, just those two, had a committee meeting from four to five o'clock where they were talking about some of the, they gave people, they went over a few things, but then people in the audience had an opportunity to make comments. So there were some questions raised, similar questions to what you're referring to by community members, and you're right, there's no answers to some of these questions yet.
Right, because you know, if we look back at our facility study, if you look at the square footage, we have the square footage in our, in our two campuses to meet this criteria that they're talking in Mountain Iron Buell. And I mean, I'm just looking at the handout that I had at the last meeting, you know, where it gave the three curriculums. And so I just did a quick comparison on what the other two schools have to, what we have to offer, and from what I could see on my personal opinion, it's very little difference. We're pretty close to what, what they're offering. So what is going to be the big thing that we're going to say, hey, you know, we're going to, our students are going to gain all this much more by, by going into this, this collaboration?
I think some of that comes from like the technical classes and we can get more specialized, and I'm just speculating here. The music, the tech, the art, the extras. Math is going to be math, English is going to be English.
There's a lot of things I think that we both, I mean, all three districts offer. It's just, I think, trying to think of the word, the enhancements that would make things better than, than what we have. Who knows until we get everything right down to the nitty gritty and this is this, this is this, this is that, that's that. We don't know until we get to that point. Right now, it's just speculation. Speculations don't do much. Except cause more questions.
Well, I guess we will be discussing this a lot further down the road.
Oh, we'll be discussing this a lot down the road here, so. Anyone else? There will be a lot of discussion, granted. Okay, moving on. Ten point O, superintendent's report.
I've scheduled a committee of the whole meeting for next Thursday, February sixth at 4:30 for a discussion with Chikagami. I think, did you email that notice out?
Yes.
So those of you who have an email, you would have seen that. So Thursday, February sixth here in the boardroom, 4:30 for a discussion with Chikagami. Reminder that this Thursday, some of you signed up to go to the Rams dinner. So that's this Thursday at the Kaler Hotel in Hibbing. The social hour is at five and the dinner is at six.
Who else, who else going to that?
I'm going.
Leon, you're going?
Yes.
I'm going.
Leon, Mark, you, Mary.
I'm Mary, okay.
And then for those of you who are interested, Virginia's public forum is going on today at Parkview Elementary from six till they think about nine. And then tomorrow, MIB's public forum is going on at the Merritt Elementary from six to nine, if any of you want to go and just listen to their public comment.
Okay, anything else, Debbie?
No.
Okay, thank you. We have to find someone to fix your glasses.
I know.
Debbie said I'm down on the lens fellas.
Well, I need a screwdriver.
Probably fell off, probably gone.
I need Gorilla Glue.
Oh, screw's still there.
Yeah.
That's a plus. Board member topics. Leon, we'll start with you tonight.
Nothing on my calendar.
Mark?
The only thing I have is looking at the participant numbers. I know Mary had asked about this a couple of times, and I think the numbers are fine in the sports, but I am curious in the hockey numbers, what the JV count is. I'm thinking that the 19 for boys and 18 for girls is probably varsity, but I have had a couple of comments that the numbers on the girls' JV is dropping and I'd like to see what that number is. And maybe a comparison for the last couple of years. If the JV, JV numbers are actually in decline for the girls. That's all.
Tom? Oh, okay, just one item. A while back, I brought up, this one constituent was interested in getting additional training on, or some training on iPad.
Did you see, do you see it's in Community Ed now? The Community Ed ad came out, it was in Hometown Focus. There are sessions for iPad training for parents and guardians that are listed in Community Ed, and I believe they're free. I think the ad is in the Hometown Focus, isn't it?
I think it's in the Massaged.
And we have some copies of the Hometown Focus here if you want to take one.
If I could get a copy of that, so I can pass that on.
Yep, that's how we're doing it, is through Community Ed, and it's specifically, I think we have sessions for parents and guardians and then just the general public who want to learn how to use an iPad.
The neighbor there was over yesterday with his iPad and he was showing everything that he does in class. My boys were excited about that.
Good.
So the kids are picking it up.
Good. Well, they usually pick it up a lot faster than we do. Okay, is that all, Tom?
That's it.
Okay, Beth? Mark?
Well, actually, it's very similar to what Tom asked, but I was just curious when the board will start using their iPads a little more than.
Can we go to an electronic board book?
When I learn how to use it.
Any day now would be fine. I mean, we're going home with reams of papers.
Can we really?
That would be nice.
I'm waiting for somebody to send me another message so I can open up. And it says, the last one I have was from Jeff, is when we got them. That's all I have. I'm glad that they're offering something because I, if we can fit it into the schedule with everything else we've got going on, I am going to sign up for an iPad class because I need to. All I know is that we are going to be having a lot of meetings coming up, so keep a schedule and keep it handy and update it every day. So, anyone else? Motion to adjourn?
Tell me.
Support?
We're adjourned at 7:02.